The Torch Lake Towne zoning board of appeals meeting is now called. Will you please stand and say the pledge of allegiance to me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. I am proud to have individual representative justices for all.
And Laura, you probably mentioned this, but if everybody can make sure your microphone is on and speak into it for the YouTube viewers and then also our recordings, Terry, and if I don't hear you, I may interrupt you to ask.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Laura Anderson here. Jeff Clark.
Present.
Kristen Graves. She has that nasty flu. Chad Impelizieri.
Here.
Dave Nusdorfer.
Here.
Jeff Weincoop. Dan Swanson.
Present.
Okay. Looking at the agenda, does anybody have any questions or changes they want made to the agenda? All good, then. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Jeff?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? I know this was very, everybody got them quite late. So, do you need a minute to look at them, or did you have a chance?
Need a motion to approve them?
Yeah, I want to make, have you guys had any corrections? No? Okay. A motion to approve? Did you want to make that?
I have a motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Does anyone here have a conflict with the case that we're hearing tonight? Nope. Nope.
Nope.
Is there any public comment not related to the case that we're hearing tonight? Sarah, I believe we didn't have any communications. Is that correct?
That is correct. No communications.
Okay, then we will move on with the hearing of the case. And first, I will read the procedure so everybody understands and knows how this is going to proceed. First, the applicant will present his case. Next, the zoning administrator will present the official records of the case. Then, we will read any communications received regarding the case, followed by public comment. First, by interest persons in support, then by interested persons in opposition. At that point, I will close the public hearing and the board will go into closed session. After the board completes its deliberation, I will reopen the meeting and the board will render its decision. I would also like to remind everyone that during the conduct of the hearing, all comments shall be directed to the chairperson. So. We are hearing case ZBA 2025-01 requested by Glenn Loy. Parcel number 05-14-575-008-00. A residential parcel located at 4649 Northeast Torch Lake Road for a retaining wall and feel to be placed approximately 20 feet into the required 50-foot setback in the waterfront overlay district. Mr. Loy, would you like to present your case?
Earth's east part, earth's east part. It's working. Can you hear me?
Not well.
I'll lean forward a little bit. Okay. Greetings, board members. I'm Rick Loy. My real name's Glenn, but my nickname is Rick. My father was Glenn, so he called me Rick, so. I'm Rick Loy, and my wife and I own the lot at 4649 Northeast Torch Lake Drive. This is across from the Lakeview Cemetery. It's been in my family over a century, and I'm the fourth-generation owner. I will be requesting a variance of the new shoreline protection strip ordinance. I have highlighted copies for you. I dropped off, so if you have any questions, they're in your packet. Specifically, 4.2.6G. It is in violation of zoning ordinance to alter or disturb the shoreland strip, protection strip as provided in this section. This, in effect, says that you're not allowed to do anything in the 30-foot protection strip. I think you will agree with me that after my presentation, strict compliance of the new zoning ordinance creates a hardship and does not protect Torch Lake. It is not in the spirit of the ordinance, and I need a variance to protect my property. I have included some photos, give you some visuals. Photos one and two is a view from the water. You can see the house sits on a block above the lake. Except for the northeast corner of the lake, most of the other lots in the township are on flat ground. Photos two, three, and four show the erosion at the south end of the lot. Large amount of sediment has been washed into the lake. Notice the exposed roots in the trees in the background. This erosion is caused by spring runoff. Water flows from the township cemetery under the road through culvert and across my property. And photo five is from the north, and six is from the south in front of the house. They show where drought excavating, pile excavated dirt and fill in the front yard. This rough grading was done prior to the new ordinance. You may recall, I was here in 2022 asking for a variance to approach into the 50-foot lake setback, but it's turned out. After the meeting, I remember Kristen Graves came up to me and encouraged me not to get up on my dream to build my house on Torch Lake. So I started looking at what can I build. There were limitations that affected the design layout. You can see the, including the copy of the sketch layout on the property. The lot is a triangular shape with 213 feet on the lake and 23 foot on the road. But you have some limitations. What can I do? I had a balance between the 50-foot lake setback, steep driveway, parking, and 10-foot side backs, which leaves only a small footprint of 24 by 40, opposite sides of a double line. The health department required me to use an engineered humpback mountain septic system. This includes a septic field, which is 800 feet away behind the park corner of the cemetery. Sept backs requiring for the septic tanks to be placed under a cat tree slab in the driveway. This slab is not designed for heavy trucks. The health department also had replacement of the water mouth at the south end of the house, 50 foot away from the fence, and away from the neighbor's septic field located at lot 15. Because of the small footprint needed, the crawl space, because of the small footprint, I needed a crawl space in the house to accommodate the mechanicals. So the house was designed with these limitations and decisions based on the old ordinance. I did have some dialogue with the zoning administrator prior to my zoning permit. I was informed my ideas were acceptable, and they do not violate the ordinance and move on. I've included a couple copies of the emails. So I'm good to go. I submitted the house plan and surveyed sketch up to the township and received the zoning permit. ZP 2023-21 on 7/11/2023. At this time, I'm contracted with civil engineering firm Performance Engineering, not Shirley, going to do soil boring, geo-technical reporting. They set the foundation depth, deep enough for rock cross protection, but not too deep because water and moisture issues and crawl space. I didn't want the salt pump running all the time. With the footing elevation set, that determined the floor height, front yard walls, and driveway drainage grades. Everything is all interconnected. Construction was started in March 2024. Home construction was well underway. In September, we were informed with project that passed a new shoreline protection strip ordinance. The zoning administrator informed me that my original landscape plan was no longer acceptable under the shoreline protection rules. After questioning why, I finally received an email on 11/26/2024. Got to cut through that. To notify me that I had to follow the new ordinance because I didn't include landscaping in place of application. I wasn't aware that that was a requirement. I wasn't informed that I should have been included. All I had was an email earlier that said my plan didn't violate the old ordinance and good luck. I was advised if you request a variance to continue, so here I am. At the south end of the property, you can see in photos two, three, and four, I started filling the erosion areas with rocks as recommended by Kyle Willing from the Anton County Soil Erosion Department. He also suggested installing rip rap. Rip rap is used to protect soil from erosion. It slows water down by waterfalls, sediment traps, or check dams. Usually made up of rocks with larger rocks. I had to stop this repair because of new ordinance. Erosion control in the south end was not finished, but over time, erosion will continue to wash sediment into the lake and wash out trees. I need a variance to fill rock, rocks in this area, and install the rip rap. In front of the house, next to the dirt and that filled with the pots in the front yard in advance of building the retaining wall. You can see that in pictures five and six. It was never planned to be the final landscape. The problem is left the yard a steep, unwalkable, erosion-prone condition. After every rain, the silt fence is full of sand. The original plan was where a retaining wall to level the yard and control erosion. Now I'm unable to do anything with this pile. According to the new shoreline protection strip ordinance, it is a violation to alter or disturb this. I don't believe the spirit of the ordinance was to promote erosion. There is some erosion on the bank in front of the house, especially near the ridge. You can see that in photo one. I need to protect the bank and slow down the velocity of the water runoff. One of the biggest problems I had is I need to access from the north end of the house for a well truck in case the water well ever needs service. Because of the design limitations on where the health department placed the septic tanks, I'm not able to get to the well on the east side. To access from north requires proof for a truck with a 25 to 30-foot turning radius in the front yard. That turn will set the location of the front retaining wall. The new well, hopefully doesn't have to use it that far. We have to pull a point, but it's a good deal to do. My limitations, the 50-foot lake setback, driveway, parking, the well and septic tank location, house footprint, front yard height, and well maintenance access created design decisions that had to be made using the old ordinance as a guideline. With the new one, it's a problem. To solve this problem now, I need a variance, but I do have a plan. I hope you all like the nice picture.
I do. Thank you.
That helps a lot. Thanks. Photography is also in my bag. Those will make it easier to follow the plan. Correct, after the rate, the front lake raise, my plan is to build a small stone retaining wall, 18 to 24 inches high. This is about where the green swan lives in photos five and six. Then leveled the dirt to create a greenbelt terrace about eight foot wide behind this wall. Half that width is going to be used as a walkway, and the other half to be used for a monarch waste station garden. I don't know if you've ever been to the barns at the State Hospital in Traverse City. They have a really nice monarch waste station there. Walkways will connect the deck to stairways. The two docks is allowed for section 4.2.4B and 4.2.5B3 of the ordinance. Because I have 213 feet, I'm allowed two docks. I have some access issues. I can't walk the complete beach on it. It is a, one of, I'll be able to get the beach together on the way from that. Behind the eight-foot wide terrace, above where the black silt fence is in photo six, will be a second four-foot stone retaining wall. This will bring the yard height up to the level of the house. We need to get out there for, if they have some people who have foundation for your cross protection. Positions while we forward enough to allow for access for the well grid. Near the deck area, there'll be a fire pit gathering area incorporated into rock wall. And we'll also need to bring in some topsoil, some pre-existing outside soil, as the sand fine mixture is poor quality. So I need the variance as needed. On the south end of the property, I need to finish filling the eroded area with installed rip rap. Slowing down waterfalls is key to erosion. Using rock rip rap for erosion control was recommended by the Anton County Soil Erosion Department is against the shoreline protection ordinance or variance as needed. So I basically have two issues. One is in front of the house, and one is south end of the house where the township says there's water from the cemetery. So now we get down to, we have four basic questions we need to ask. Will strict compliance prevent use for committed purpose or unnecessary burdens? I was forced, I was forced to leave my front yard in a steep, unusable, unwalkable, partial landscape condition. It is cut off by access to my water well for service. The current rule prohibits erosion control. Over time, my property will become very degraded and detrimental to the lake. The second question, the variance I am requesting is the minimum variance needed to provide substantial relief to be there to other property owners and consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. I believe other property owners would want to protect Torch Lake. The shoreline protection strip ordinance 4.2.6G was passed to minimize erosion, stabilize water flow, correct water quality, keep nutrients from entering the waters. However, 4.2.6G doesn't allow for any disturbance of filler or rocks in place of the 30-foot protection strip. My property has erosion problems. I'm unable to use the rocks or retaining walls to control erosion. I don't believe the spirit of the shoreline protection strip ordinance was intended to prohibit erosion control and degrades the use of my front yard. Third question. The need for variance is due to unique circumstances, particular of the property, and not generally applicable to other properties in the same zoning district. My lot is unique as it sits on a block 15 foot above the lake, while most of the other homes in the waterfront overlay district are level, flat, and don't have erosion control issues. Neighbors nearby have already installed retaining walls, which yet, she's just putting in a nice beautiful one. She's one of my neighbors. They have already installed their retaining walls, terraces, rock grados. I don't know, the house two in front of me, I could get more into their rock grados than I got in my house. My lot and my neighbors to the south, I have the only lot where the water runoff had flows from the cemetery across our lots in the way. Question three. The problem and resolving need for variance has been created by strict compliance with the zoning ordinance, not by myself or my predecessors, because strict compliance with shoreline protection strip ordinance prohibits any disturbance of altering the 80 and 30-foot strip. Therefore, I'm unable to do any landscaping to control erosion, provide access to the service of the well. My problem, when I started with the passing of the new ordinance, there were no issues with all the ordinance that was in place when zoning permit was issued when construction started. Stop it, let, landscaping halfway through construction has blown up my front yard in a pour shape when I started. Now comes the tough part. Is there any questions?
Yes, I have a couple. Okay, first of all, what was the date that you said you started construction?
July 2024.
Twenty-four, and you received the permit in June or July?
July 11, 2023.
Okay. So, one of my questions was the exact location of certain things in these, your photos and illustrations definitely helped. Maybe you could give me a little more information. Okay. The 18-inch stone wall, how far is that into the 50-foot setback?
Okay, from the edge of the house, the edge of the house to the lake is 52 feet. There's a ridge line that goes along the edge, front edge here.
Right in front of the trees, right?
Yeah, right in front of the trees.
Okay.
That's about, from the house to there is 30 to 35 feet. It's not straight, so it's kind of.
Okay, varies between 30 and 35.
So then, so the ridge will be, this will be setting on the backside of the ridge. Because you don't want another ridge, because I talked to the landscaper, he says that you don't want to, you don't want to harm that bridge at all. Because that's, that's really kind of critical. So they put the wall behind it.
Okay. And then, the four-foot stone retaining wall, how far is that into the setback or from the, you said the house is?
It would be, let's say 30 feet plus, less eight, so that would be, that'd be 22 feet. That would be, so you got 30 feet. So it's going to be somewhere around between eight and 10. Let me see. You got 35 feet, the worst-case scenario. So that would be 15.
27 feet.
Let me see, so you got from the lake up to the, up to the top of the bridge, it's going to be about 15, 16, 17 feet. So it's going to be eight foot inside of that, so it'd be just a couple feet to maybe eight feet.
Okay, so, let's see. I'm trying to figure out how far into the setback you want to go with these walls. So, so from the house, you have got two feet plus, there's 50 feet from there to the lake.
The worst-case scenario would be, would be there's 15 foot width. That'd be worst-case scenario. That's all that's on that top wall. And if it's going to go from, so the 18-inch wall is going to be right about 15 feet in, then 15 feet into it, to 10 feet into it. And the other wall is going to be two foot, two foot into it, to seven foot in approximately.
Are you saying from the house or from the lake?
Well, the figure there's a 30-foot protection strip. It's easier for me to figure from the house because that, I know that's where, that's at the 52 feet mark.
So, so yeah, I'd rather hear the numbers from the house as well.
Yeah.
From the house?
Yes.
So you got from the house to, the worst-case scenario, from the house to the top of the bridge is 35 feet.
Okay, and from the house to the four-foot stone retaining wall?
That would be, the first retaining wall is going to be a foot, two foot into it, and then this is going to be about eight foot wide. So that would be.
So 24 feet?
Yeah, somewhere around. Now, the truck, for the truck access, I need somewhere 25 to 30 feet to make the turn.
Okay, so then could you explain to me, I might have to walk up here and show us on your map.
These are, they're just rendition.
Okay, so.
There is, there is one, I'll show you it up here. This is probably.
So I'm wondering where the septic tanks are, where the truck is coming in, because it wasn't clear on your.
Okay, the septic tanks are over here.
Okay, there we go. I see now.
The truck, I left extra room here to make that turn. Get in here.
Okay.
And then from here to here is about 35 feet. And so shoreline protection, if this is 35 feet, that's 15 feet here. So the shoreline protection area goes up 15 in here. So it's going to be probably somewhere right around, somewhere right around here. You can see how it kind of falls. This is a survey.
Okay, so do you want to, do you want him to move, you want to take this down and it's?
Well, they got, they got one.
This, this black fence is not where the wall would be.
It's very close to where the wall is. That, and that's a four-foot wall, you said? Yes. Because it, I have.
And then the green thing here?
That's going to be like an 18-inch wall.
So that's about the distances right there then? The 18-inch.
18-inch wall, wall is going to go behind that. And of course, this is kind of, this is a ways down. This is from the dock area.
Yeah. That surprised me where the wall is going to go, right?
From here, but this is actually starts swinging from here at the end of the deck, then it starts swinging up. I got a, I got another photo.
What is this? What is this? Laura, what is this? What is this?
That's the bank, that's the drop off to the water, where the, where the trees are.
Oh, that's just, no, that's.
Yeah, because they didn't, they didn't put trees in here. And this is, this is what they call swallows part for erosion.
Yeah.
So this is closer than, I think the, the, that, the, it's going to be right on, a little bit past the outside of the
The wall, the.
Yeah.
And then wraps around the corner then?
It, it goes up here, yeah, it goes up here. And look on this picture right here, this is up over, as it ends up here, or then it wraps up to here, because there's the deck, the deck up here. And it wraps up here.
And then this is wall here too?
Well, this is a four rendition, then it's going to bring around, because the well is right there. Right, the well is there right here, it's going to, in other words, it's going to wrap around here. My artist didn't.
Show, show me again where the well is.
The, the well has a little white spot there.
No, the, the well is going to be, actually, the well is right up in here.
Oh, it's over on this side?
So, yeah, there's the water well right there.
Okay.
Can you point to it again? I can't, I can't see that.
No, it's going to be right, right in there.
Okay, thank you.
It would be helpful, I've got a picture of the well.
Wow.
That's research.
That's the well directly.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're saying that you would bring the truck in around this side?
Correct.
This side, and then he'd have to come all the way over here to service the well?
You got it, swing around here, and you got to get the truck, it's got to get down there. Stay a few feet away from the foundation. And so.
Off the deck, yeah.
Here, here, you're looking at a turning radius of about 30 feet or 25 feet, but you get a little bit of angles. I left extra for the, for the access, I left more room on this in the house.
Okay.
To, to make that turn right here. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's all interconnected.
I see that.
So Rick, that.
Truck is going to have to back in?
Yes.
Around.
And no room to turn around.
Is that shed in the way?
Uh, that shed is then removed.
Oh, okay.
There was two sheds, one was on the original homestead, my, my brother got that, my parents got away, so then he got the cottage and I got the vacant land.
Okay, I think I remember that from the first time. I had a few questions, were you done Laura, or?
Yeah, pardon?
I have questions as well, I did want to cut you off.
Uh, yeah, I do have a couple more, but.
Go ahead.
Then we'll, okay, so the steps, are those, what are those composed of? Are those?
I believe those are going to be like a slab step.
Like a concrete slab?
Like a concrete slab, ultimate landscaping.
Sorry, could you use a microphone? I'll try not to bump into anymore.
There, there were ultimate landscaping, they said there's a regular precast step.
Okay, and then the, and then the patio area, what is, how, what's the size of that in square footage and?
I didn't, it's going to be about 10, 12 feet, enough for a small part, but basically going to be shaped by the wall. Part of that section is going to be out of the protection, Shoreline Protection, but it's part of it's going to be in, because it's just going to swing around.
And that's also going to be concrete?
No.
Okay, what is that made out of?
Uh, it's going to be a stone retaining wall.
No, no, I mean the, this patio, the.
Uh, I was going to say something, it's got, I want something forest, something field, black stone or, you know, or crushed gravel or something forest, and it's not going to be concrete. Because I need, I need the, I needed the monarch to be able to soak in the ground.
Right. Okay. Chad, do you want to ask your questions?
Yes. Where does the surface runoff from the parking area go?
The parking area?
So that's this area here.
Okay, part of it runs down, there's a drain, there's a drain here, and then there's a drain that goes out this way. Catch a little bit, because we can't get everything to swing over here. And the majority of it's going to go right down here. And the cemetery runoff comes, actually, the cemetery runoff comes here, that's, it has run in the past, run over to about here. That's one of the reasons we're, we're working on putting the rocks in, trying to control it more, this area here. But most of the runoff from the driveway is now come down here. There is, there is a low spot here, couldn't, when water comes down the hill, you can't own, you can't move it, bend it too much. And so they put a drain here, and there's a drain here, and that's a six-foot drain that goes down to the lake shore.
So, so when you say drain, you're talking about.
A six-foot.
Okay, so there's actually a pipe that.
Yes.
That collects the water and, and from the cemetery, what hap, it, it's in a pipe going under the road?
Uh, yes, a big one.
Okay, and then what happens from there? Is it?
It, it spreads across my neighbor's property, then it runs across mine.
So it's not, it's not contained all the way down to the lake, it's?
No, it's not.
Okay.
We, we'd like to make it, to talk to my supervisor. That's out of zoning issue. There's been much discussion about controlling that water. Because my biggest problem was until I cleared some trees out, we couldn't get any fill in here to, you know, start filling it in. We put, we, we trucked some, we'll be able to run out some smaller gravel back there, but that's, that just blew out. And the water flows, they could actually get water flow probably into August, coming spring runoff. 2017 was a really bad year, because the ground is frozen and there's rapid warm up. And it really flows.
Okay, and so is that primarily the cause of the problem at the south end of your property?
At the south end, it's almost all caused by that, or they also, the cemetery also put some drainage to pick their water down to the brook way faster, and that's kind of been depth around a little bit. When I was a kid, I used to camp on, and that, you have tents there, but you can't, no, it's much more downtown, it used to be a few years ago.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have a question?
Yes, so the riprap typically has like a mesh layer underneath it and then varying sizes of rocks?
It does, but like I say, I didn't put, I just, at this point, I just put rocks down. And when I talked to Kyle Williams, he used to, even now at the state, he used to be with the soil erosion. He, he showed me some, uh, he made like bees, like waterfalls. There's things, basically, you can create places for the sediment to drop off. The whole key is try and slow that water down.
And so when you say riprap, we're just talking about perpendicular to the shoreline, not anything along the shoreline?
Uh, by time it gets to shoreline, it's too late, so it's going to be above the shoreline.
I'm just saying, most of the time when they talk about riprap, they're doing it actually from the water to the shoreline and it's parallel to the shoreline.
I put, I filled in rocks, but if you look at picture number two, you can see how much I filled in there already. Some of that was one to two feet deep.
And did they talk to you about putting native plants in instead of rock?
Uh, probably just wash it last night. Because I, I had cedar trees, I grew all cedar trees, and they, they kind of, they washed out the big cedar trees and, you know, a small native plant. Yes, I, I thought about putting more native plants in there, but it's, the water velocity gets too high.
Okay.
And then I would say there was native plants, because the plants, they never planted any in there, so what was there was native plants.
That was part of the provision though, because you read about what the spirit of this was, and, and one of the items was to screen artificial structures, which is houses, wells, and everything else, and they talk about you can only cut corridors through trees, you can't top a tree or take them out, or you have to replace them, and so I guess that's what I'm looking at, is replacing some of that. Would you be replanting some of the cedar trees?
The bigger thing is in front of the house, that thing. If you look at it, that was all native vegetation, I hadn't planted, up till last year, I didn't find it. I did find, replant the bank with native plant, native plants, because I do got some erosion issues there. And so, yes, where the, the steep bank is, is, I went to the conservation sale last year and bought three or four different plants, planted along, because I wanted to see what they did. Because they get a lot of sunlight now, and then most of, most of them died. A dogwood seemed to do the best, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to. Yes, the, the steep bank on the front, yes, will be planted with native plant.
Because you do have, I forget what you called this green snake here, but.
That's called swaddle, that's a thing about erosion.
So that could be a temporary thing until native vegetation grew to kind of slow it down?
In the, in the front yard?
Yes. Yeah, it's not permanent, so it's going to allow things to take. I deal with a very steep driveway myself. I think we're 45 feet from our house down to Torch Lake on the other side, and it's a constant battle. I mean, erosion's natural and it's going to happen, depending on the storm, you know, that's when I start pulling my hair out, but you see this in different areas on banks where they did that, they'll spray some grass in and then they'll put these in to slow it down and then pull it out later. So I was just thinking, if they asked you.
As far as the front yard between the house and the bridge?
Yeah, like all the way down to the water in this strip, the Shoreline Protection Strip itself.
Well, it's, it's all sand and it, I didn't plant, not necessarily native plants, but I did plant grass on it. Every kind of range, it's all sand. That was all, I knew I was, I was planning on having a retaining wall. And so I had the fill brought in and dumped. So, and all the excavated dirt out of the crawl space got dumped, so it's not really a natural shape, what it was, what was there.
Okay.
Do your neighbors, does the neighbors have the, their wall? Go ahead. Apparently it's further back, so it doesn't fall into the, the setback.
No, there, there's, she, she has, just put a new wall in, but she knew that, that new ordinance was coming out. She had a problem with some concrete blocks in hers, and so she, she hurried up, she started and was able to finish her wall before the ordinance took effect.
These, none of these pictures show that wall?
No, they don't. And the powers, the powers, the, her neighbors, they have more money than some, some small states. They, 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 they bought several houses, and they have a, a rock wall that goes down at an angle. And they put, then they have a big patio where they put more rocks down there. It was probably what, kind of the ordinance, ordinance was trying to stop, because they kind of overdid it, it's got a fireplace in it. Uh, the house on the other side of me has more of a terrace.
There's a north?
Yeah.
I went over, tried to look at some of this, but with all the snow, I couldn't determine the bank, and it looks like the north of you. But that's all a natural bank there.
Oh, no.
Well, I, I couldn't, like I said, I couldn't get down there to see it.
But from, they, they got two boat, they had two boat houses, and it goes from one boat house as any one.
Oh, I'm, that was, that would be the third place now.
So the second place, the house?
The house, well, the boat house, that, that's more further than what I have.
Okay, the one right next to me would be my brother's house?
Yeah.
And that one's, the, the house is about 25 feet from the lake, that one does not, they're the only ones that does not have any terrace done. He's, he's had, he's built up the shoreline one, but that's.
So that's a natural grade right there?
Yeah.
Because it looks like it blends into yours.
It was, it was, it was part of the estate.
Yeah.
The turning radius you said was 30 feet to get around the corner of the house?
25 to 30 feet is about like a F350, F250.
All right, well, I was just thinking the well trucks are usually like, I don't know, eight to 10 feet wide.
Yes.
So once it gets around that corner, is the area then minimized, or are you just staying at that 30-foot?
Um, I, I was following the ridge lines, I, I got, I want to protect that ridge. So I want to protect the front ridge from, from runoff. And so I was, then I built an eight-foot green belt, or a place for the water to come down and soak into the ground. Then up to the level of the house.
So the truck will be just driving over?
The, the upper part.
Lawn, the upper part, but it would just be lawn?
If I ever have to, yes, it'll drive over and I'll put ruts in it, and then I'll prepare the rocks.
Okay.
So you're planning on planting a lawn in that, on that upper terrace?
It's, it could be some native plants on it, and it could make it like a garden atmosphere, maybe. No, because we got the, on the other side of it, I could have the, the monarch playstation. So.
Right, so my understanding is one of the issues on Torch Lake is all the lawns that are planted and the fertilizing of it and the nitrogen that washes into the lake, and that's, yeah. That's one of the, one of the issues of not having.
I think I was planning on moving the front line.
Well, but if you plant a lawn, then, then, you know, hopefully this will stay in your family, but that's, that, you know, whatever we do is in perpetuity in, in terms of a zoning variance, so.
Uh, I have looked at some native black grasses. Like I say, with the gophers, there is a couple of native black grasses that they thought would qualify as native Michigan grasses. Probably some of them, the Michigan grasses are really tall, small brush. Um, you got pollinator plants. Yeah, I thought about using marder, which is a native plant. You know, I.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I haven't really thought much on, on, lying on a plant there. I, you know, we, we talked about getting some sort of garden across the front, so you don't, you don't walk up the edge of the lawn and fall down four feet. So, and as far as lawn, you know, I have hardly, each of a little bit of a garden, I've got eight feet. You know, it's, it's probably going to make a, try to make a, not straight, let's say, but epoxy lawn, it's going to be, try to make it attractive. So I, as far as grass, I have done that much.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Loy, I had the pleasure of going by your new home this morning. It looks like it's going to be a beautiful home, let me just say that at the outset. I have, I mean, this to me is a bit unique because you applied for the house permit in 2022, 2023, I believe it was July 11, you received the permit to build the house. And in the midst of this time period in '23 and then into '24, the zoning ordinance, there were discussions to revise it, and you were apparently aware of those discussions, correct?
No, if I was aware of those discussions, I would not be here.
You were aware that there were public notices inviting people to meetings for the zoning?
I, I learned, I learned a lesson that I should pay attention.
Okay.
That's what I learned. I didn't find out till afterwards, because I, she went, I went down the site, talked, commented to her about her beautiful rock wall. And then she said, well, I got a new ordinance, and I go, oh. And about that time, I got a notice, I got an email. And about that time, I got a notice, I got an email that says that I got, I got all of the two ordinance.
And that's what makes this sort of unique, because we're tonight operating under the new ordinance, and our job is not to rewrite it as I see it, but to enforce the ordinance that exists today. To that extent, I've got a question for you.
Sure.
I've listened carefully to your presentation. I've read through the materials a couple of times. You're asking for not just a variance to do a number, several different variances, per se, to do this?
Basically, two.
Well, but I look at these photos, and you want a fire pit. You want to build two walls. You want to do a number of things that are not consistent with the current ordinance. What I'm saying is, we don't have, perhaps as a body, we can say, if you have six things you want to do, build two retaining wall one, retaining wall two, you want fire pits, you want to do whatever, we could say we agree with one, three, and four. I don't see where we have anything here before us that lays out with specificity. I want these items, number one.
It's in the, it's in the, if you look at the application I got.
I read it. But I don't see where you lay out, these are the six items that I want. Number two, what I don't have, and Laura was asking, exact dimensions for where that wall, the two walls are to be placed. Dimensions relative, we're in this fifty-foot zone. Where within the fifty-foot zone exactly is this wall to go? Well, but I want something in writing, because eventually we, and certainly I want to look at something and say, we approve retaining wall one within so many feet of the shoreline. We, we can't do that. Oral presentation isn't enough.
Is, I have the survey, there's a survey, you can go over that.
But it doesn't show retaining wall one that you want to build, retaining wall two that you want to build. Where exactly in that survey is that wall to go? What are the dimensions of that wall width-wise? How many feet from the shoreline to the wall? I don't see it.
I don't, I don't, like I say, don't have exactly that. They're, they're, they're there, because there's, you'd have to have period identifiers and calculate it out.
But I assume you've retained a civil engineering firm or an engineering firm to do all this?
I did the civil engineer, and he helped me, he helped me lay out the grade.
Yeah.
And then, obviously, then barrier surveying and calcasman. You know, they, they laid out the sketch, and he did, he did the height surveying, where, in other words, the height of the the elevations. And that's what, that's what that drawing is, is actually the survey of elevations. And I tried to get those fairly accurate. I mean, I could, if you approve the plan, I could have, I could take that to Dean and say, can you have me a sketch that shows this, this, and this?
Well, but for us to approve a plan, we need it, in my opinion, an exact plan that you propose with the footage as to the width of the wall. I'm just giving that as an illustration. And where exactly the wall is, we can't approve a plan that is vague, a plan that doesn't have dimensions, a plan that is, you know, in your mind clear, but I don't know.
Okay, and I have a south end of the lot where there's erosion, basically goes from the lake all the way up. Now, would it help? My, and my problem is, I was halfway through and it changed the rules.
That's what makes this unique.
Do me a favor. In your packet, can I help you out?
Yeah, I read that. That's section ten point two, subparagraph C. General standards issued zoning permit. But the zoning permit that you were issued did not contain, or you did not request, any of the items that you're requesting today.
The whole, the whole zoning permit isn't warranted.
I acknowledge that. But in the midst of this, it was changed. You know, we were all told the zoning ordinance is changing. Yeah, okay. And, you know, you seem like a very credible and knowledgeable guy who's worked really hard on this project. So, I don't mean to question your credibility, your character, or anything like that. But you, you know, and it does appear that there is, you know, erosion, that there are some issues here. But, you know, there's no expert opinion being offered to say, well, by me building this wall, by me doing this or that, this is going to cure the problem. It's your opinion, and I, I respect that. I'm not an environmental expert. I'm not an engineer. Many times in these situations, you have, people have an expert come in and say, okay, this is the program. This is why I think it's going to work. And I've got all this expertise with respect to doing this. I don't see that here.
So, the worst thing I can do is either the way it is.
Okay. Which, under the ordinance, that's what I read the intent as being, that within that fifty-foot, the drafters and, and the board that approved this ordinance intended that things be preserved as they exist.
Right, but when, when, when I think the drafters of this ordinance were thinking about the lake preserving everything, they're thinking mostly on other parts of the lake where they're not on a bluff, and they don't have erosion. And it's very, there's not that many houses on Torch Lake on bluff. So, that's, I think, one of the arguments, is in one of my arguments, that's my motto to me. I say, yes, it is. Because there's only three or four, well, there may be a few more than that, but there's not that many that are on a bluff like that that will have erosion issues. And there's nothing in that ordinance that, that you can do anything to control erosion on if you have erosion problem.
I agree with you.
So, I, you know, like I say, I, I don't know what to tell you about it, but it's, it's, I mean, either going to have erosion or, or not.
Thank you.
Well, I think maybe one of the issues you were getting to, Dan, is that when we issue a variance, we issue a variance for so many feet into the setback or typically, it's not just a an undefined.
If you can do it to a fifteen-foot in the setback, it'll cover everything.
Okay.
I agree with, with Dan that that we're asking for several different variances. Looking at this picture, number one, this, it doesn't look a whole lot steeper than what I have at mine, at my home, from where the house is to the lake. And that all, on this, if you separate from that part right there, it would be easily being able to plant some trees and shrubbery, and you would not have erosion. You'd get away from erosion from this, this part. Okay? Yeah, I, in my opinion, now, I'm not an expert either, but over here where the creek is, or it's too bad you can't make a, a creek out of that. I have a problem with arguments, grades, coming down my driveway. I kayak it up and it's so much water comes down. So, I'm very familiar with what you're talking about. But I, I agree we're talking some different things here. And I still don't understand this wall over here, and how about this wall on the pitch, on this pitch?
I'm sure.
It looks like it's a four-foot wall coming right here, this wall, right here.
This is basically wraps around.
So, that, there's nothing wrong with this. It's just a four-foot wall?
Well, it's actually probably a four-foot here. Because it's, this is where it's going to come down then. This was basically a, a come to the end, because there's going to, got, got, you got the back here, that we're going to come down to here.
So, it's not going to be a four-foot wall there?
Oh, because it's going to be at the end. And so, you're, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to make it work pretty.
Well, I hope so, yeah.
So, so, and then, and I know that the, the, the property slopes down here.
Uh-huh, I, yeah.
So, this is where it slopes down. So, you're probably start down there and actually build, build it up. You just want to make sure you hold it, because you got, you want to protect. You got to get at the well, so it's going to, as you come across, and you're like, how are we going to end this? Well, let's have a fire pit here, circle, circle around the fire pit. You're going to have a stairway down through there.
Why didn't fill the wall as necessary? Is this, is this where the water's coming down the creek?
Well, the water comes out of the creek, actually, from about, the worst I've ever seen it was.
How much did you want there?
Okay, let's come here, here. Comes from here to following here, but now I got a house in the way. So, that's going to be a plus. But there's, there is some erosion problem in here.
Okay, so it kind of spreads out over that whole area? Is that what you said?
It, it used to, but I, I put a house in the way now.
Okay.
And, and it depends on the year. Because it's really bad, I, I've seen it go all up, I've seen it go all the way up, up to here. But like I said, I put a wall here on the other side. I got to, to make sure I got, there's going to be some protection, so it doesn't happen.
But you do need that wall right there.
Uh, it's, that, the, this is probably where the, there's time, there's not much, here I have to hold up that, but here on, here, 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 this way. But it slopes down, so that's, it just gets sweeping around.
And this would be a four-foot wall. This whole thing here is a four-foot wall. So, you're going to have a lot of fill to put in your.
A lot of fills, a, a, a lot of fills have already been deposited. If you look at, look at your five and six. All of this is all.
You're going to take this dirt and put it up here?
No.
Well, then, if, if you build a four-foot wall through here where this black, this is where the wall's going to, where the line is.
Lot, yeah, a lot of the work, this is coming up eighteen inches. I put a bunch of dirt here, this, here, all this right here, here. It's not natural dirt. This is.
Yeah, and that's, that's going to come on, you know, okay, you won't have erosion there when that comes. But I'm talking about this wall here, where the four-foot wall. There's going to be a lot of fill between there and your house to bring it out a lot.
Oh, that's.
Why, why are you going four-foot, Nick?
Because the distance from this height to where I got to get over the foundation is five and a half feet from this area to here.
Okay, well, I'm not an engineer again.
Well, the engineer, that's, that's why they have the engineers figure that out. Because it's, you, you have to have so much coverage for frost level.
Sure.
Okay, so, that was, that was set by the engineering firm.
For frost level, there's no building.
Okay, your, your foundation footings, if you look, if you look at the, the building code for the Antrim County, you have to have so many feet of dirt over any foundation.
So, yeah, all the foundation for the house?
Yes.
I'm talking about way out here, twenty feet out from the house.
Well, it's.
You're talking.
Well, and then, a lot of it was designed to have the, the truck get across here, too. So, the, the, so the truck's going to back up the grade around here to the well. And this is, this is going to be, and this was basically to hold it, to hold it back.
Okay, yes.
But if, if you want a specific, you know, I, I would say fifty-foot into it would.
Okay, all right, I guess that.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sure.
Thanks. The parking area, the paved area there, was that existing, pre-existing? The, the parking area? Sorry if I was being loud.
The parking area was kind of, there was a parking out there, and then we expanded it a little bit, because I have to share the driveway with my brother.
Got it.
And he, and he pulls down, he accesses, he's, he's got his parking here. And mine is going to be like, on top of the subject tanks, I can park cars, but not heavy trucks.
Right. From where you are proposing, and I'll come back to this in a minute, but where you're proposing to put the walls, they are all north of what's depicted in pictures three and four. Am I correct?
Yes, three and four, that's the south end.
These are the south end. This is the runoff primarily from the cemetery, right?
Yes.
So, the, these are.
The runoff from the cemetery is, probably starts right about here.
Ah, okay. So, so the end of the wall here, no one else can see, but the end of the wall here would help to divert the water to the south?
A little bit, yes. Because it, because it, where the, the washout down to about the steps is where, if you look at picture two. Picture two, you can see where there's.
And this is approximately where your steps would be, as depicted in picture two?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, so that's, that's going to have the steps here.
Okay.
Because here, I don't have the shoreline you can walk on. On the other end, I do.
Right, okay. Have you looked at any other configurations for these walls? For example, bringing the primary retaining wall closer to the foundation? And, and I know what you're saying about the well trucks. It also occurs to me that there's another way around the house.
Which way?
Around the.
East side?
Southeast side.
Okay, I did a well truck over, a heavy well truck over the subject tanks. And there's only ten feet between the deck and the property line. And there's going to be a small wall there to make sure to divert the water, so it doesn't go into that house. So, if you got a ten-foot wide truck and a ten-foot wide easement.
Right. Well, we're all telling personal stories. My well's under my house, so. If I want to get a well truck in there, I got a bigger problem. So, I, I agree. I, I really want to know where these walls are going and how. I'm confused how close we're getting to the lake. Your, your, your hand-drawn map here shows native plants. Your pictures show cedars. Would the trees remain?
Yes.
Okay, so you'd, you'd keep those and, and add to them and?
Compared to the ordinance, if you look at my house where all the windows are, I, I had, I had cut the view lanes early before the ordinance. You know, I was ahead of the ordinance on that aspect.
Got it.
I got, if you look at the required amount of trees there, I got accessible over ninety trees on the banks.
Okay. And I think you already said that the landscaping was not required and was not part of your original plan or approval and?
It, it, it wasn't needed.
Right. Okay, so I'll say my primary advice is we need some better guidelines on exactly where things are going to go and what's going to happen in between the the various structures.
Does everybody, does everybody else agree? I'm assuming you agree with that?
Yes, but with one question. I think we need a definitive list of every possible variance item, variance item. Wall one, wall two, fire pit. I mean, I don't know what else we have here. And obviously, the dimensions, a drawing with exact how deep into this fifty-foot protected area is this? And let us assume we. And let us assume we obtain that. The question I have in the back of my mind is based upon granting a variance and the four standards that have to be met. I have some real questions about that, because I would hate to see someone go through the time and expense of getting all the drawings and doing all the stuff that we ask. If, wait upfront, at least some of us are unsure whether these standards are to be met, and the burden is on Mr. Loy's shoulders to meet those standards. I don't know if anyone else shares that concern, but that, that's a concern.
Yeah, and, and by the way, Mr. Loy, I didn't say at the outset, I do appreciate your thoroughness and preparation, and on, on various boards, I've seen a lot of people come and not be prepared, and it's truly a breath of fresh air. So, we, we appreciate it, and, and we don't, we're not against you in any way. We all wanna protect the lake, and, and as one of the people who helped review and, and approve the ordinance, that's really the, the goal of it. So, we're, we're not trying to harm you, we're not trying to harm the lake, but we're trying to come up with a solution here that will be permanent property and will also be precedent for futures, so.
You can, this, say I follow your ordinance ten point two C, that I was approved under the zoning grant, under the old ordinance without any request for landscaping, I was approved without a plan. Under the new ordinance, ten point two C, I follow the, all the requirements remain under the older ones, I'm here to give you help to see the property.
Okay, let me just, let me comment on that, and then we'll, we'll, we'll explore that, but we're here for a variance application.
Yes, I was, I was, that's what I was recommending to you.
And, um, uh, I guess, I wanted to get your feeling first about if you want more information, because I think we can suspend, um, the meeting or, or reschedule and ask for you to bring more information, uh, so that we, you know, everybody's comfortable making a decision on this. Or I was going to also ask Sarah what other alternatives might be available to you. So, let's, let's just first answer the first question. Do you want, I think we need, um, a majority vote to uh, reschedule, suspend the meeting, get more information, and move on, is that correct, Sarah?
Yeah, if that's what you'd like to do for that, um, I mean, I also agree with Dan's comments about maybe a quick straw poll, if more information would change your findings type of thing, but you can always say, we need additional information, and ask them to provide that and come back later.
Okay.
So I would recommend, is, can I ask Mr. Loy, is there anything else that you have to add? And we, we may have some additional questions for you, but I think there's a point at which we need to close the presentation phase of this, right?
Right.
I just wanna stop the erosion, protect my property, continue to build my house. And I'm soon, I hopefully soon will be ready in the,
Rick, will you have gutters and rain barrels when the house is done?
Yes, I have gutters, and they're already installed on the front.
Okay.
They ran out of summer to do the job.
Okay.
Chad, do you, will more information be helpful, helpful to you in making a decision on the variance or variances that are,
Well, let me start by saying, if we're doing this criteria A, B, C, D, we're looking at a couple variances here, so they'd have to be separated? That'd be my understanding?
No, I, I think that, um, no, because the variance overall would be to provide for certain, uh, distance requirements or relaxation from that, where I think that Dan's comments more about what's going to be included in there. So we wouldn't write a variance for one wall at fifteen feet, another wall at twelve feet, you know, and a fire pit at fifteen. We would say, overall, you would need a total of something within that would include this wall, this wall, and a fire pit.
So we could separate it, we could say, yes, you can have the four-foot wall, but not go further into the strip, we could say?
You could, a lesser variance, um,
Well, I think, I think that's where the, um, specific dimensions would be helpful, because I think that we do want to define the dimensions of the variance for, in terms of the wall, and,
Yeah, now, one of the things that set the distance of the wall and turning radius on truck, you know, that was twenty-five, twenty-five to thirty foot, and so you can angle the truck and maybe squeeze it down there a little bit. And one of the things is, the ridge line isn't gonna change, and that still needs to be protected. And so, you know, that, that, I know that it doesn't go any further than thirty-five feet from the house, because I measured it, so that would be, uh, fifteen foot into fifteen foot. Like I say, it's, I had this, green line, I was gonna make a eight-foot line, you know, I, but it's still, it's still, yes, worried about the trucks, and that's why everything works together.
Yeah, I mean, a, uh, like a professional surveyor would be able to say, here's a turning radius, yes, for a truck, and put the wall in there, and they could dimension the closest dimension and the furthest dimension.
Right, because that would go to one of the criterias, it's the minimum necessary to accomplish. And so, that would, that information would make me feel more comfortable. Um, I would like to keep, anything that's not native, natural in terms of rock materials as far out of the, um, out of the, uh,
The, the rocks I plan on using are probably very steeply from the ground up.
Right, but I, but, again, that would need to be specified in the variance, um, because if we just give you a, 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 open variance, you could do anything.
I was gonna go with a natural stone wall, because, yes, but they're, they're the cheapest wall you can build.
So, okay.
So I think I'm hearing, well, I've heard a couple, I need more information, of more detail, um, uh, something that would have a surveyor, that would have dimensioning on it. Materials, I'm hearing that's important, any materials that are being added to that area, whatever they may be, if it's the wall, or if it's rocks, or the vegetation, you're wanting more details on what, what that is as well.
Yeah, and, and actually, I had one question, or at least one question for you, kind of relevant to what we're talking about here. Um, because in his application, he said he needed a variance to disrupt the soil, to put the steps in, down. Is that true, is that because of what type of steps? Or anybody, even if they wanna just, you know, drive a few, um, pillars into the, the ground and put a, a wood, set of wood steps in?
My, what I've been told, that I can't disturb it anyhow, anyway.
Okay, so,
I didn't, I didn't know, I just added that, because I just assumed I needed.
Okay, so let, let me ask, see if Sarah can answer.
Stairs are allowed, so in the, the waterfront overlay district, it basically says, nothing is allowed except for one stairway at a width of forty-eight inches, um, per a hundred feet of frontage. And then you can have a landing that's forty-eight inches wide, not to exceed forty-eight square feet, so it does allow for the stairway.
Right, and that's why I was asking about the size of the patio too.
Yeah, and so, and then it talks about a ground-level walkway you can have, but it doesn't talk about patio, you know, no patios, no things like that, that would be here. So this, but this is talking about structures in that setback, so, and a structure is anything that's on the ground, essentially, um, can be in that setback.
Anything on the ground, you know, dirt, grass, or whatever, you know, you know, regular, like, fieldstone or pine step, it's, it's what I was planning on using.
And so that stuff's all in, those stairs and all of that's in section four point two point four of the new ordinance.
So he doesn't need a variance to get the steps down to the water?
Correct.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that, be, okay, thank you.
I, I, I wasn't, I, I just, I was looking at this, can't disturb it.
Got it. I mean, ba, based on the information that I have, I don't believe that, you know, you're allowed to have a stairway. So even if it wasn't designed exactly like this, you're allowed the stairway, you know, forty-eight inches, that type of thing. Because I don't know that this has dimensioning for the width of the stairs, but forty-eight inches is,
I think forty-eight inches is,
I think it was mentioned, yeah.
Was it? Okay.
Okay, Dan, um,
I, I think some more information, some dimensions, any, um, um, whether it's alternative plans, or, or, you know, trying to, to, to make the structure closer to the house, closer to the existing, and, and less incursion into the, the protected zone would be appreciated and?
So, do you, do you, let's say, you have one end where I could have it wider to take the first turn, let's say back in?
I, I, I will be perfectly honest, just me, I'm unmoved by the argument about the trucks, but.
More information would be helpful to you?
More information, but I also like, on this picture six, I think with some grading here, since you're already have filled it, but that could just, I don't know why we need a wall there. I think that, that that's not that big a grade.
You can't walk in, you can't hold it.
Are you ever planning?
I mean, you can't, in the front yard, you can't, you can't walk up and down that hill. The deer, the deer love it, they eat all the grass.
There's your mowing problem.
I, I just, I don't know, I, I guess I'd have to, because, because from, I picture six, once you get over here, this, the slope down is natural. That's the, what, and that's a lot steeper than it is from here to the house.
Well, then, that slope is,
And that would be mowable going horizontally.
No.
Okay. I just don't know that, need that wall there, that's, that's what I'm thinking, my opinion.
Would we need a materials list as well? We've already mentioned myrtle, which is an invasive species, though, a good holder of soil, and deer love that too, but, um, if it says natural, native, then, are you the one checking all of that?
Yeah, we check the species versus the list to see, so, for those details.
So it'd have to be,
I'd have to look, it would depend on, a lot of it, if it's a natural, I would think so, being that monarchs are here, and they have things that they feed on and that whole process, but with, we'd need materials, a species list is what you're interested in.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
The, the steepness would not extend there, if I would have felt that here, it's not natural.
Way to chase dirt out.
Not really, because you've gotta have the foundation covered, right?
I gotta keep the foundation covered.
Can I ask Sarah a couple of questions?
Yes.
I'm going back to the requirements to grant a variance, and I'd like a better understanding of what this might mean. And that's, uh, section eleven point nine, and the first requirement is strict compliance with the ordinance, will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for the permitted purpose. The permitted purpose being, in this case, a house.
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah, single-family dwelling.
These variances really, the requested variances, he will have a house. So, do we even get beyond the first, if I'm reading this right, if I'm misinterpreting it, please correct me.
No, I mean, I think that's part of the argument, do you, do you feel, planning commission, do you, or I'm sorry, ZBA, in the, um, information you've been provided, the documentation, that, um, similar to what David said, you know? Do you feel that he can use his property in the manner that it's intended, with the use allowed as it currently is? Or that he needs the retaining wall to be able to use his house?
Okay, and then the second, the next item is being consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. And as I read the intent of the water overlay district, it's pretty clear to retain, preserve, not to allow invasion within that fifty feet. I mean, unfortunately, it, it doesn't have, except for a walkway, and I think a ground, uh, two walkways, it says here, under section four point two point four. There's no other exceptions. I mean, am I misinterpreting that, or?
No, I mean, that, those are the two exceptions that are in the ordinance. And, you know, if the, you know, the ZBA, this is a new ordinance, right? And if the ZBA is hearing something, and maybe you're going, we should allow for, uh, soil erosion concerns or something like that, that would be something that you should say, hey, Sarah, will you take back the planning commission? Jeff, will you take back the planning commission? Maybe we should look at some additional exceptions, but yes, under the current ordinance, these are the two that you're allowed to do in that space.
And we're not in a position as a body to rewrite,
Correct.
Or broaden.
Right.
Right.
The ordinance has to,
Right.
Although, to play devil's advocate, you might argue that, um, uh, the second part of criteria A is, um, or will render ordinance conform, conformity unnecessarily burdensome, and even though erosion control isn't in that, you could argue that, um, that the, it could damage his house, he could have a lot of problems if he doesn't control the erosion there. And so that, so, um, not allowing him to do that makes it unnecessarily burdensome, and actually, uh, a possible financial risk, or risk to the house and the property.
I think that's a good argument, but my question would be, you would need some evidence to substantiate that. Not me saying if it's my house, I think this might occur. Would you agree you would, we would need some evidence? A report by an expert?
I think, can you prove? You got sand, like, soap, you go to the house right now, there are all the soap fences are full.
Yeah, so moving forward, I heard straw poll, more information, or you wanna move forward with criteria, I guess is kinda where we're at?
Yeah, well, and, anything else that you have to present on the case?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think so, from my perspective, you've covered more than my report had in it, and all the details of it, so, um, just considering that we do have, you know, it is a new ordinance, so there are a little bit of different criteria as far as the wording, so if you're remembering something from a previous, um, application or something, everything's been updated to be the new zoning ordinance, the new criteria that you need to, to meet for that, so.
Okay. Jeff?
I, I would prefer more information along the lines of what we have discussed here before we examine the criteria. I'm not sure that we've met the standard of minimum necessary to achieve the intended use.
Dan?
I have no problem with that, um, it's a process, and let, let it, let it play itself out.
Dave?
I would agree with that philosophy, that procedure.
I would as well.
Um, I think we need to be specific about the additional information we need. Would you, uh, would you like to continue the meeting, or would you like, uh?
I, I just, I just wanna post the night's front yard, so I can sit down with my wife and watch the sunset.
I mean, I think I have a list based on your discussion, and I can help him with to get the documentation that you're looking for, as far as dimensioning, materials, exactly what's gonna be placed in that space, based on just discussion, but if you wanna go through specifics, we can do that too.
So, what, what, tell me what?
What?
I can tell you.
Okay, go, go ahead, you tell.
I don't like the idea of a four-foot wall going across the whole front of your property there. I mean, that's, I mean, that just takes away from what we're trying to, to do with this 50, with a, with a new ordinance, is protect the natural. And you cut all the trees down there and, and built it up, but it's, I think it's still salvageable, in my opinion. I just, I just hate to see a big wall going across it. Just off, just off the top of my head.
So I would like verification that, um, the erosion, erosion situation and the, um, the options for controlling erosion?
Whatever that, maybe Brad Muma, he lives here at this point, or maybe Bill Miller, he had a helmet. Maybe I could have him give me some options or like that. I like the idea that the retaining wall is, I think it's, it stops and keeps it level. It slows down the flow, you've got a green belt, it clamps on the water.
And, and I would like an expert to tell me that.
Okay, so, so in other words, if I, so you want me to get like a subengineer?
Would that be the appropriate person to have do that?
Yeah, I think a subengineer and landscape architect or someone that can explain soil erosion and the ways to control soil erosion.
Right.
Somebody that has the credentials.
Because I think that, I, I do believe that's a big issue. And I think that, um, you know, show my hand a little bit. I think that, that Mr. Loy and his property deserve some consideration on the issue of erosion there and, and possibly some relief. So I'm, I'm looking for more specifics, because, because I want to help you, put it that way.
Right.
A lot of those ideas came up with my discussion with Kyle Williams, which was, he's a subengineer, he works for the state now, but he used to be the soil erosion guy. They, they helped, they came out, he's the one telling me about the drip wrap and, you know, how to slow it down and so forth, and, you know, the retaining wall. That's where the ideas came from, where he used one of, like a report from a subengineer or somebody of some stature.
Yes, and then I'd like specific dimensions on where the walls will be, how far into the setback you need a variance for those.
Yeah, essentially, I mean, the burden of proof is on the applicant to provide the documentation. And you're saying we need more documentation, because right now, it's not supported so that I can make that decision, right? You're trying to justify your soil erosion angle, and you don't have the documents to be able to justify that.
And they may adjust what they're telling you, too, if they read through article four. You know, if they know 30 foot is a restricted area, 50 foot is that to limit what they can do, I bet they could be even more creative, so I think that would help.
And again, a lot of your erosion is from your fill, which is now a fact on the record, so.
Oh, it is, that, that is.
Yeah. It's a condition that was created, so, I mean, we?
Well, it was created before the ordinance.
Understood, but it was created.
Yeah, and it wasn't ever created if I knew that they were going to have to follow the new ordinance.
And, okay, one more question, when, or just, when did you begin construction? I forgot to note that.
March.
2024.
I can try and correct.
Okay, um, are you comfortable with coming back with more information?
I will do whatever it takes.
Okay, do we need a motion to suspend this, or?
We will need a motion. Before we go do the motion, though, just because we did have the, the public hearing tonight, could we do public comment portion of it based on what we already have? And then, since we do have some public here that may have come and may give you some ideas or? Just to?
I have actually one card, but open for other, you don't, you're saying no. Okay, Bob Cook?
I just wanted to address, and your question about the drafters of this thing. It actually came up near the end, and it went back to an event that took place in roughly 2021. We had Heidi here, and she talked about a green belt, and a number of other communities talked about a green belt. So we thought, right, let's put a green belt in. Part of that discussion said, well, you don't have to worry about the basin, because it's all sand. And it's controlled by the blossoms, critical dudes. We started thinking about, what do we have across Torch Lake? That would have a bluff, and we couldn't think of anything. We didn't even think of this property. Our whole idea was flat property, where if somebody came in and built a new house, and then we started saying, how many, how many lots do we have that we're going to build on? And it was just a handful. So to be perfectly honest, the drafters never thought about a piece of property that already had erosion problem. The other side of this is, on the south side, in 2020, 2018, Ellen Martel came to the board, asked the board, I was the trustee at that time, asked the board to come up with some kind of arrangement with two property owners. Now, one of the property owners had sold, and there's no people there. The township was going to have to spend quite a bit of money to try to fix that problem that came as a result of the culprit in having to drain the top part of the cemetery. So the south side was escalated by the fact that we created changes in the runoff, trying to dry out the top part where some of the burial sites, caskets were floating in their locations. So the south side was a very unique situation that I need you folks to understand that this really led to the tail end of that event. The township had quite a bit to do with the fact that that particular area was never addressed. It's to the west of it, laid out the plan, and you're going to approach it. But the drapties of that section, it was at 100-foot level. They had to think about it, go around the lake, think about how many bluffs you have. The ones that we have, all those people who already addressed that issue. So it's a unique one-off idea in, in our property. Relax, but the reality is, you were able to fix whatever your problems were before this ordinance was passed. And that's, that's part of the problem. What, what he is facing, everybody else has had a chance to fix it. So those were my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So do we meet, Sarah, do we need a motion to suspend the meeting, or can I just?
Yeah, I wouldn't just make a motion to table until we receive further information. That's what you're looking to do?
Okay. I'll make the motion to table. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I think that's 5-0.
Can I come here in the second?
Oh, the second?
I made the second. It's on, yes. Sorry about that.
Maybe we should read the break minutes, so we can hear. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, sorry, just trying to catch up on my notes here. Then, I guess we'll move on to our miscellaneous business. If you would like to go, we won't be talking anymore about the case. So I'm, I'm not making you go, but just telling you that you can leave if you want. We won't be addressing that any further at this point. Okay, do we have any miscellaneous business?
I do not have anything.
Uh, I was wondering, uh, the approved new rules of procedure. Do we have hard copies, or have those been?
They, you know, I was going to bring them to the meeting tonight. Nope.
Can they just be put in everybody's boxes?
I can put them in the box, and I'll let you know when they're there to pick them up. But that was my intent. I was gonna print them when I came in and give them to you and miss that. I'm just, I'm sorry. They are ready for you. I just need to print them, and I'll put them in the box, and you can pick them up.
I probably should have reminded you before the meeting, but, yeah, I just thought of it.
It was my intent, because I worked on getting it all finalized for you, so I could run a quick print. Oh, well, okay.
Okay. Let's see, summary of action, I think, actually, we're missing the, uh, under miscellaneous. Can we get a report from the Planning Commission?
Report is, Planning Commission has not had a meeting since the last ZBA meeting.
Okay.
It's been a couple of months?
Yeah.
We're gonna have one in February?
February, it's the next meeting.
Okay, the next meeting is?
Planning, yep.
February?
The ZB.
It'll depend on if we have the information from tonight.
All right, any additional public comment tonight? Nope. Sarah, anything coming up, summary of action items before next ZBA meeting?
Uh, no, nothing.
Okay. In that case, I'd like to make a motion to?
One question for the record, the next meeting then, because I think we'll have business on the agenda.
Right, yeah, if we, if we get the information that we can put in the packet for the next meeting, you'll have your meeting on the third Wednesday. So it'll just depend on when the information comes in and is available.
Third Wednesday of February, so?
Trying to do the math.
So I think it's?
Canceling that meeting.
Yeah, we're not canceling it right now. It's scheduled for the 19th at 6:00. And I will let you know.
Good, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then I'll make an emotion to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second, please?
Second?
I've got a lot of seconds. Okay, we'll give Chad this one. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 7:42.